I don't know if you, can you hear me? Mark?
I can hear you.
But for some reason, my camera is not working.
Well, we can hear you just fine.
Then that's all that really matters.
It'd be a good start for the first meeting at least, Shannon.
Right. That's odd. I keep hitting the button to say turn camera on and it says no.
Mark, this is Bob Bass. For some reason, I don't use Teams on my laptop and the invite, when I try to email it, I can't open the link to the Teams. Can somebody resend that invite to my personal email?
Sure, sure.
But we can see it here.
Okay, good. I don't know. I have all of my information that I was going to share with you on my laptop, so if I can't share it, I'm going to be hamstrung. Hey, Bob, did you get a message from Janice Jones? She just sent out another link. 541. No, I haven't received it yet. I forwarded it to you. What's your email? Letter N is in November 42625@gmail. I was going to try to demonstrate how we're going to do this work, so it's, I'm sorry. I forwarded that to you, see if you can get it. Would it come from Janice? Or from Mark? No, it would come from, I just forwarded it to you there. Well, I'll get back to you after you start your meeting and I'll try to catch up with you if you want me to say anything.
Absolutely. I think that's very important. Do you have it open on both computers now?
I have it planned.
So I will start with your main computer and see if you can access through the laptop, because we're hearing.
Good. A lot of garbage in the transmission, what'd you say, sir?
Go ahead and exit out of your main computer and then try to enter into the laptop.
That's what I'm saying. When I try to open the link, I get a copy between the two. I have to send an email, and when I send an email to, but laptop, the link didn't work.
You should be able to access it through your router.
And now I can hear you. It's very garbled, but I can't see anybody.
If everybody would mute their mics, it'd make it a lot easier.
I haven't routed it yet.
If two of you are in the same room, I would recommend that you have one mic on.
Hi, I'm getting really bad feedback. I'm going to totally get out and come back.
Better. Shannon, I'm trying.
It looks sounding better.
You seem to be on it for some reason. Is that clockwise, if there's two of you? Okay, I muted Bob because it seems to be the computer that the feedback's coming from. So Steve, maybe you could unmute yours and see if that works better?
How's that work?
Let's see here. Yeah, it's better on our end, at least. Everybody, yeah? And, um...
Bob's appears to be getting some feedback.
Yeah. There's just a little bit coming from your, but it's not as bad.
Just mute yours and it'll be fine. There you go.
And then we lost Bob Bass altogether at some point. And let's see here, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 members. Anita, are you appointed to the, you're not, so we have 6 present? Who do we not have, do we know? Let me look here and see. M Lopez? Who would that be? Does anyone know?
That's Michelle Lopez, and I do not see her here.
Right, okay. So that's our missing member. It's really up to Bob and Mark, I suppose, if you all want to continue to wait a little bit, or we could introduce ourselves at least, if y'all think that's appropriate.
Yeah, for the interest of time, I think it's probably a good idea to go ahead and get started. Makes sense to me.
Yeah. Why don't we have staffers introduce themselves first and then we'll jump in. I'll go ahead and, Anita, do you want to start?
Yeah, hi. My name's Anita Collins. I am with the Office of the Hayes County Judge.
And I'm Mark Kennedy. I'm General Counsel for the county and have been in this post for some version of it for about 14 years. Had the joy of redistricting once before. And it was a good experience. I've forgotten most of it by now, so we'll be learning all over again with Bob's help.
Maybe have our chairs introduce themselves next, I guess.
Sure. So I'm Mark Trayhan. I'm the Democratic Party Chair. Good to be here.
Steve, why don't you try unmuting and let Bob introduce himself, if you don't mind?
Good, Bob. Hello, everybody. I'm Bob Parks, Hayes County Republican Party Chairman and Co-Chairman of this meeting tonight. Everybody hear that? Okay.
I'm Ken Strange from Wimberly. Appointed by Lon Shell for this committee.
My name's Steve Meyer and I was appointed by Walt Smith, or recommended by Walt.
I'm Shannon. It's Patrick from San Marcos.
Shannon, who's appointee are you?
Oh, sorry. I'm appointed by the county judge.
Mr. Bass, we were just doing introductions, so you made it just in time.
I'm sorry. Bob Bass, Legal Counsel for redistricting, hired by the county to assist the Commissioners' Court and/or the Commission.
Reuben, I think it's just down to you, if you can hear us. And you're muted at the moment.
I can't hear anybody if they're talking.
Yeah, I think Reuben's having some difficulty with his mic. Reuben, I'll introduce you as Reuben Garza, who is Commissioner Ingleby's appointee, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. I think that covers us.
Yep. So I had prepared, I guess, in a schedule with a bit of an agenda for the meeting that Bob and I had discussed, and some of the items I'm happy to share with you, and I know Mr. Bass would probably like to share about his report, is what I'm kind of guessing. So I had also suggested that we do some sort of introduction to this commission, do the charge of it, talk about future scheduling and what meetings might look like. Mr. Floyd is not available yet, because I believe he had some medical reasons for not being here tonight. And then talk about what are communities of interest, and talking about communities of interest interviews, and getting statutory information from Mr. Kennedy. So those were a few items that I had put as a potential agenda, but I'm obviously open to how this might proceed tonight. Mr. Bass, did you have some ideas of how you wanted to proceed? Can't hear you.
Bob, I think you should unmute yourself. Sorry.
All right. Can you see the screen I've tried to share? I'm not familiar with Teams, but it's similar to what I've used before, but I can't tell whether you're able to see it or not.
I guess we can see it.
All right, I know this type is very small. What you're seeing here is the map application that we use. You can zoom in or out, but generally speaking, it's pretty, you kind of have to zoom in to a certain degree of closeness to the subject matter to see what you're looking for, really. But I'm going to drag over on top of it the handout that we used at the meeting with the Commissioners' Court, and this is the population of the county taking out the 522 people in the federal or state detention facility, and these numbers that are in the chart come from the database chart up above in green. Likewise, with the racial characteristics that are shown on the map. Let me get this, clear it up a little bit. If you see, we get Asian or Hispanic population, we go over to the Hispanic population in the chart, Hispanic origin, and these numbers ought to correspond to these numbers below. So we just cut and paste out of the database into our spreadsheet, just for ease of depiction. So anyway, that's where the data comes from, out of the census data. Now, at the census block level, what you're seeing here are the four existing Commissioners' precincts. Their disparities are shown on this chart. Precinct 2 is overpopulated by 21.48%, and that corresponds to this number in the demographic data, 21.48. That's just a direct read off of this table. The precinct 3, underpopulated, 22.91, is reflected here in the data above. So that's kind of how we use or how the data is depicted. So every census block that is assigned to by your existing boundaries, precinct 2 is picked up and reflected in the database. So when we zoom in to closer scale, we begin to see other details show up. You can see the outline of towns, the municipal boundaries of Needawald, Yulin, Kyle, Buta, Mountain City, down here, San Marcos, Creedmore. So all of those municipalities are reflected by this light shading. We go in even closer and we begin to see roads show up and the like. So this is how we move around the screen. Now, it is somewhat cumbersome, I will admit, but the blue dots are polling places and the green diamonds are the residents of incumbents, and you can see where they are around the county. There's here's a residence, here's a residence, here's a residence, and down here is a residence. So as we start making the assignments, I'm just going to illustrate how that's done. We ask the... Where is my little, yeah. Okay, we would say, what is the target? So we're going to want to move population out of 2, and ideally, we would be able to move it straight over into 3, but we've got 4 coming through here. So it's most likely that we're going to need to move population out of 2 into 1, and then from 1 into 3, or into 4 into 3. So those are the difficulties of the configuration of the precincts and where the population is the most and the least dense. If we were going to just demonstrate that, I think I would zoom in first, pretty tight on an area, and when we actually start doing this work, we will probably call in the data that is reflected in the Hispanic density chart. But right now, we don't have that set up on my computer to do that, but we would follow in selecting precincts. As I mentioned before, precinct 1 is already the most dense in terms of Hispanic population. It's about it's about 53.78% of Hispanic population. That is not the voting age population, that's the raw population. If we go over to the Hispanic population that is underage or over voting age, that falls down to about 38%. So that is a problem in that we're going to have to try to keep the minority content of precinct 1 relatively high to meet the benchmark that was set in 2010, where I expect that population was closer to 58 to 60%. With the growth in the population coming into the county, it's somewhat weakened that content, but the law sort of requires us to try, if we can, to meet that population. So if we were going to try to do a sort of a what-if, we would say, what is our target precinct? That would be precinct 1, and we're going to be taking population out of 2. Is everybody with me there? And then we turn on the census block layer as our working layer, moving population out. The source is 2 in yellow, the target is 1. So we would come in and begin to make those selections. Where's my little pointer? When I moved this over off of my desktop to my laptop, I had some issues. There it is. Okay. Well, this is a first trial basis, so I apologize, but it's not doing what it ought to be doing. You select the blocks from the target. Now, target is 1, the source is 2. There we go. So once you make a selection, your census blocks are highlighted. You try to select those blocks carefully so that you don't miss anything, but you try to take the whole city of Yulin, for example. And then when you get to a decent boundary, that looks pretty much complete without missing anything, you make the assignment.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so sorry to be a little behind on this, but it looked like precinct 1 had pretty good numbers and precinct 2, it was, I mean precinct 4, but it was 2 and 3 that have the biggest shift, so why are we changing around 1 when we're really looking to 2?
Because 2 and 3 don't touch each other, so you've got to go through either 4 or 1, and so you've got to do it kind of the awkward way. Ideally, you would just be able to shift population from 2 into 3, but they've got to be touching each other to do that.
Right.
But it seems like a more logical way, or at least an easier logistical way, is going to be to shift precinct 2 into precinct 4 and then rotate part of precinct 4 down into 3.
Yeah.
The counterclockwise rotation that maintains the separation of boundaries and it maintains, you know, 1 doesn't need to be adjusted, as you said in your presentation on Tuesday. It is almost perfect in statistics and number and in commonality, so what we're really looking at is 2, 3, and 4, which basically requires a counterclockwise rotation of population, of precincts, voting precincts.
That is one way to do it. The problem there is while the populations, well, I said 1 is almost perfect, but to maintain Well, I said one is almost perfect, but to maintain, it's been sort of diluted over the 10 years from being a very strong minority district to one that's not so strong. As I explained in the meeting, the voting age population is lower for Hispanic population. So the number of eligible voters for the equal-sized population groups is lower for Hispanic population than it would be a corresponding Anglo or even black population. Likewise, there's lower registration and turnout. So I think one needs to be enhanced somewhat. And we have pretty heavily concentrations of Hispanic populations out here in two. So we do achieve a couple of, we're killing two birds with one stone, you might say. But yeah, and another problem is moving population from, say, this area that's a little more rural into this area that is also rural really doesn't move many people. If you start getting into the denser population, you run into a problem of possibly disenfranchising precinct two's commissioner. So I worked on it a little bit earlier and came up with a way to do it that might made sense to me somewhat is to take population off of the eastern end of precinct two, shed it into one, and then correspondingly come back down to the west end of precinct one and take population into three. Now, that's an awkward way to do it, I admit. I'm not, I can, we can explore coming more directly through four into three. But I think we're going to find that the population densities are here in the towns and not so much out in these open areas. And so you start moving Mountain City or part of Buta, you split those populations. So I mean, I'm here to listen, I'm not here to dictate. So if you're telling me to try to move out of two through four into three, I'll try to do that. And I'd like to, you know, come sit down with you all and try to do some of this work directly. But I'm afraid time constraints are going to be that we're going to have to get direction, do some work offline, and then come back with you with a map or two and show you how we did it.
Can you get GIS information from the county and be able to better break up this data into the current precincts? I mean, we're looking at the entire commissioner's precincts at this point in time, which is a very large block. And when we start shifting people, you start, you talk about shifting Yul. Well, Yul is not just one precinct or one district from that standpoint. And so we need to kind of look at also the precinct alignments because we've got to maintain the under 5,000 in the precincts. And in regards to the rotation that I was also talking about, my thoughts were more along the lines of 440 and 441 combined are about 5,600, 5,700 registered voters. I don't know the population because we don't have that, you haven't provided that breakdown by precincts. But I'm assuming that the population is going to probably be about 10,000, give or take. And so taking 440 and 441, which are the two northern, northwesternmost precincts, voting precincts up in Hayes County and rotating them into three will give three a very major boost and maintain continuity.
That's certainly possible. We do have the VTD layer. I don't have it loaded up at this point, but I can load the election. We have the polling places and I can load that data into the map where the voting boundaries are visible. So we can try moving whole boxes until we get a little closer. In my experience, moving whole boxes works maybe initially, but eventually you have to break it down to the census block level to get as close as you want to be.
Well, it gives us a basis to start, at which point in time we can then look at two things. We can look at both additional precincts or shuffling some precincts, but also we can look at the resizing precincts. Because for instance, we do have one precinct up in northwestern Hayes County, which is over 5,000 as of the latest registration on September 1st. And so that one was obviously going to have to be readjusted to some degree already.
Yeah. I will get that layer added to my layers and then take a look at exploring that option.
By the way, Bob, I want to ask you a couple of questions real quick. Mr. Bass, I want to know a little bit about when you look for a minority opportunity district, right? The criteria around that in terms of looking at where a district might open up for someone that identifies in a minority status category. That is a very different attention around taking a look at numbers supporting BRA versus maybe a situation where you've had a commissioner that's been in a precinct for a long history. Am I right on that? Because Commissioner one, who identifies as Hispanic, is in that district since 1996. So it seems to me that if you're looking at it in terms of understanding whether there's a group that needs support in terms of having a voice, that that kind of history sets a precedent already that that is a district that has already been established. Is that true?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're asking me, but you look for communities of interest that have some cohesiveness and you try to keep those intact to somewhat. The ability of that precinct to elect a minority representative is indicative of some cohesive voting pattern. I don't have the demographics from the 2010 plan, so I don't know how strong that district was in 2010 or what the benchmark is yet. I need to get that data provided to me because it is important that we try to meet or exceed that benchmark. It's possible that is our last.
Yes, just wondering, since that commissioner has been established since 1996, whether that really supports the idea that that is already a minority opportunity district? Does that make sense?
It does, but that assumes that that's going to stay at relative minority strengths. I don't think you can say, well, because it's elected a minority representative since 96, that we can disregard the benchmark or where that, what the equation is that has resulted in that person being elected consistent.
We just need to look at what the percentages have been in the past and compare that.
That would be helpful to know, yeah. If it, you know, if we could go back, I don't know how far we need to go back. We usually only go back 10 years. But, you know, it may be that that is still retrievable, I don't know. But Hayes County has grown tremendously over the last 20 years, I know that.
Right, okay.
Bob, I believe Janice Jones in my office was looking for that information to provide, and I honestly thought she already had, but I will check in with her tomorrow morning.
Okay. Anything else? I apologize for the slowness and the problems we're having, but hopefully we'll get this, some of the bugs worked out of it. The data that we've been using is the legacy data, which requires us to build some formulas into it. Tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday... No, yeah, Thursday, the 30th, they're going to release this final data in GIS form. We will compare that data and see if it works a little more smoothly than the legacy data is. I do want to come to Hayes and sit down with the commission and start moving some boundaries along. And I will add the VTD layer to the Hayes data. We also need the ability to call up the Hispanic population so we can see on the map where the populations are the most dense. I'm just kind of looking at the numbers here, and that's a pretty awkward way to do it.
Bob, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Ruben Garza. It would be helpful if we, if you could email these documents to us so we can review them. You mentioned the Hispanic voter age. I would be curious to see what effect that has on the district and the representation.
All right.
I'm a little concerned, and I represent Debbie Inglesby, who's the commissioner of precinct one, that we keep stretching that precinct out into precinct two. And, you know, to some extent, it's fine because there are a lot, there are Hispanics in that area. And I've walked a lot of that area, so I know that there are a lot of Hispanics.
Yeah. This is the data chart, Ruben, that we demonstrated at the hearing. Right now, voting age population for precinct one is down to 50, 50.33%. And at that level, I have some concern that that remains a viable minority-majority district. In my opinion, needs to be closer to even 58% or so, just taking into account the lower registration and the lower voting age of Hispanic population. So while that district has been a reliable minority-majority district in the past, I think part of the Voting Rights Act says we have to make some effort to preserve it. And I think if we just leave one hands off, we're not going to be able to preserve the viability of that district.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I disagree because Hispanics are having lots of babies.
Well, babies don't vote.
Oh, but they will.
So that's the problem.
They will. I won't be allowed to see them, but they do vote.
Well, I'm worried about 24, 22, or 23 and 24 elections. And so that's why we've got to build a plan that's viable today or the day we adopt the plan.
I understand that, but you also need to realize that Mark Jones has represented the Kyle area and a lot of those rural areas, and we're disenfranchising him simply by taking more area out of his precinct. And I understand why you're doing it, but then it just, because I used to live in his precinct. It disenfranchises, you know, I felt we were disenfranchised.
Yeah. I understand, I'm just saying the numbers dictate that we're going to have to move 12,000 people. That's a lot, 12,000 people out of two. We got to put them somewhere. We eventually need to get 12,000 to 13,000 over into three and get the deviation under 10%. So I mean, those are, those are going to be difficult, and it's going to take a lot of wailing and gnashing of teeth, I'm afraid, to get it done. But, you know, somebody, somebody's got to give up and somebody's going to take on a whole lot of new population that they haven't represented before.
I just don't want you to disenfranchise people in Kyle and the commissioner in Kyle because they're just...
Yeah, I haven't touched Kyle in what we're talking about yet, but I hear you, Ruben. I'm not...
It would be better to give him more precinct four because it's rural. And he, in my opinion, he likes the rural area, he likes the farms, he likes the ranches.
Well, the problem with that is that rural areas don't have population sizable enough.
I know the density, but we need to look at it because we're saying it, but do we really know that?
Yeah, and that's why it's important that we actually, you actually see the census blocks being moved to test out your theories and see if they'll work. And if they do, then fine, if they don't, we'll have to find another way.
Because I'll tell you, I live in San Marcos now, but my house sold in three hours. So there, you know, houses are going like firecrackers. And, you know, the population is exploding, and I'm sure it's exploding in Durbin Springs as well. They've got good markets.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Again, as quick as I can get the database to be as where I want it, we'll get that going. And that should be next week, I hope. But it's been slow, and I'm as frustrated as anybody about how slow it's been getting off the ground. But we've got to be confident in the data before we can actually do much work.
Right.
Just a side question, out of curiosity. What, can you talk a little bit about what communities of interest are and give us a definition and describe for us what that means in terms of this process?
What word did you say?
Communities of interest.
Well, that's hard to define exactly, but it's based on people of common interest, common ethnicity, common churches, schools, a sense of identity of neighborhood, basically. You try to keep those areas or communities of interest intact as best you can. And that requires both looking at the demographics, but also local knowledge to say, you know, I think I gave the illustration at the hearing. North Carolina went down the interstate into every town along the interstate and pulled black population out, and the court held in Reno v. Shaw that that was, those communities of interest had little in common other than their ethnicity. And that was not enough to make a plan based on arguments of fragmentation and packing that really all you were doing was treating people predominantly by their race, and that's unconstitutional. So communities of interest can be both mixed racially or ethnically, but they should have some commonality of interest. I don't know if that defines anything. It's more, it's hard to make a hard and fast rule. I mean, it's really more art as much as science.
Gotcha.
Just so everybody knows, I heard a couple of people comment that you would like to see the documents, and I emailed them to each of you just a few minutes ago. So you should have it in your inbox. If you didn't get it from me, check your spam folder. Email doesn't like my email address.
That's why I'm showing this chart. That was panned it out at the hearing, and it should be available to the commission that shows the ethnicity of the existing boundaries. Any other questions? All right, let me get a better map that has the voting boxes in it. And I will report back to Mark when I have that ready to go. And then we'll try to set a date, come up there or down there and sit down with you in the near term. Anything else for me? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm not exactly clear on the process about how this will go. Can we clarify that before we go on? And Bob, I would really like to hear from you about procedure two. So, is he already gone?
I believe Bob just ducked out on us. I can, I can talk to you all about, I think we can look back to the charter as maybe at least a starting off point in terms of procedure for the commission itself. And some of that is really left to you all ultimately to decide, which is sort of how the charter reads. So, but I'd be happy to cover that with you if you'd like that now or I can wait.
Sure, sure, that'd be fine.
I had it pulled up earlier, and now I've been messing around and got rid of it. There it is. Well, and I just have it up on my computer. I don't really want to belabor things by reading it to you, but, and you all should have a copy. I, I don't really want to belabor things by reading it to you, but, and you all should have a copy of it. Now, if you don't, I can send another email to each of you and, and attach the charter. Basically, the charter says that there'll be seven of you. They, you all are going to have these meetings, which shall be recorded. And the charter does not really say, other than, you know, in keeping them for posterity's sake, what will happen with the recordings. I think at some point, we would probably archive them on the site, on the county's site. And, and/or they would be available for public information requests. It does not say that you must livestream meetings or include the public in these work session meetings. That's what, that's what these meetings are sort of called, is work sessions, where you get together and talk about ideas. But the charter does require that you have at least four community meetings, one in each precinct as it exists now. And you could have more. Dr. Trey Hand, you and I talked the other day. I think you had thought that maybe you didn't want to have more public meetings, community meetings at the onset. And I think that's something that this commission could decide to do if, if it wanted to. I think it's a matter of what the commission wants to tolerate in terms of schedule. And, you know, the, the impact on your time. You're all volunteering your time to be here. And it is appreciated. I, I don't assume that you will want to have twenty community meetings, because you may not have the bandwidth for that. But you can have more than four. The charter says that you should have four, one in each precinct, at least. Now, those will be advertised with some notice, five business, five-business-day notice before the meeting. We can help with that. Janice Jones at Mahal Office will help get that word out and publish notice or post notice on the internet to make sure that the public's aware of it. Also, I think that, that the Commissioner's Office for that precinct would be available to help get the word out. And interested members of the public can attend those. Now, the charter indicates that meetings like these you're having now, work sessions, may be close to the public. It's permissive. Meaning you could, as a body, decide that you want to have public meetings for all of these work sessions. As a body, I think you could, you could decide on how to do that. The charter is not specific on the rules of procedure that you're to follow. I would suggest that if you can't reach consensus on something, that you put it to a vote. And you could, you could follow more of a Roberts Rules kind of standard and have a motion and a second. But that's up to you. I found that interacting with past commissions of a different type, at least, Parks Commissions, Road Commissions, et cetera, that it's best to try the consensus-seeking approach first. And if you hear a lot of objections, and it seems like you're going to be split on it, then you bother to put it to a vote at that point. Because, especially in the context of redistricting, where you could have divided opinions on something, it is nice to take the exercise to, to seek consensus first when you can. And, and that, and that's important, I think psychologically. That's just my opinion, so. There are a few things in the charter that, that address what, what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do. The, the commission really isn't meant to go outside of the redistricting duties that the Commissioner's Court has at hand. So it's not really the scope of the charter of this commission that you talk about. Legislative precincts and precincts that are outside the scope of what, in authority of what the Commissioner's Court does. Procedurally, that's really pretty much it. Does anyone have any comment thus far?
I've got a question about the public nature of what we do. One of the, what I've seen from other redistricting commissions in other counties, they at least have a webpage, maybe under the county commissioners, so that when we do have these things, we can direct people to say, this is where we're going to be, and this is how to see it, rather than trying to get into the Teams thing like we did tonight where it's a mess start. But at least a place where people can go to watch, even if they can't be, if they're not being able to input, that's okay, that's fine. But just where people can see it in the name of transparency. So do you know, would we be able to have something like that? So when we do those community of interest, that for people who can't make it, they could at least listen in to find out what's going on?
I, I think so. I have found it difficult to run what I call a hybrid meeting, where you are in person and virtual. It, usually the people who are attending virtually are, they don't have a very good experience. But we could certainly try to do that. And I think that if there are people getting up on a microphone and speaking, that would be an easier way to do it. If it's more of a mingle, then that's probably going to be harder to do. I think Anita has her hand up. Go ahead, Anita.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I did request, I asked Kim if there was a possibility of having a page on the Hayes County website, just like, kind of, I guess, like we did for the census at that time. We had a, you know, a, a link on the front page that just took you straight to the, to the census information. We could probably do the same for the redistricting, don't you think?
I, I don't see why not. I think that'd be, now, in terms of content, I think probably this body gets to decide, content-wise, what's on there, to the extent that you agree on it. If you all are not comfortable with the recordings of these meetings being on the site and available to anyone, then we would want to hear that. I'm, you know, obviously, we're, I don't have an opinion. It's y'all's decision to make. Likewise, you could decide to livestream the meetings and have them on the website. You could decide to invite the public to attend these meetings. I think when you invite the public to attend live, there's the issue of having to decide whether or not and how you're going to allow them to participate, which, or if, you know. And, and, and that's another question that, if we're going down that path, raises. So, you know, depending on what you all say you want to do, then we'll have to maybe address additional issues.
How long do you think that'll take to set up?
Oh, not long. Anita, I think we had the census site set up pretty quickly, and then we developed content absolutely well along. Is that right?
Right, yes, we did. It shouldn't take too long. It's, you know, she hasn't read the email yet, but as soon as she does, you know, she'll pass it on to the IT people and start making it, you know, happen.
Thank you.
That would be a good location, at least one location to advertise the community meetings when we have.
Right.
And would that also include, so if we wanted to have people to say, here is a, for lack of a better word, an email address, a portal some way for people who want to put in their comments, but can't, so we might not have that hybrid thing, but at least people can say, oh, here's my community of interest, even though we weren't able to interview them, they could still have a place to put in their communities and make comments about their communities of interest.
Sure, and I think an FAQ could be developed from that, possibly. We've done, probably the most robust FAQ we've done in recent times was related to COVID. But we, we had that posted regularly and updated regularly.
One thing we can also do is we can continue to have the meetings, and we can just stream them, that people can tune in and be able to listen. And then, as was suggested, then through the portal, they could submit questions for the next meeting. We'll bring up issues of interest from that standpoint to make sure that it gets into the queue. I agree, hybrid meetings are very complex issues. We do a lot of it. I'm involved in technology. We do a lot of it. And it, somebody gets short shifted in one way or another. But it doesn't mean we can't be more transparent, allow them to understand the process. We also don't necessarily want to have all the interruptions, so that we can try to get some things done. We've got a very short window here and a lot of busy schedules that we need to work around.
Yes. Dr. Trey Hand, you had asked, I believe, Jan, I saw you at the courthouse earlier, and I think Janice maybe talked to you, or maybe it was an email. But you had asked about livestream. Is that what you were referencing? Is not live public attendance, but a livestream so the public could view it? Is that-
Yeah, yeah, I do. I mean, if we have a, if we have some sort of portal that people can provide comment, and then they can view the, the proceedings of our meetings, I think that suffices for giving public the opportunity to participate. So that feels good to me.
And, you know, again, the recordings, having them posted for those who cannot. We've got a lot of families with young children and stuff, and this is dinnertime for them. And so their ability to be able to view it later also is, I think, imperative.
I agree. I think we need to livestream. And there are a lot of people, and we have a portal. There are seniors, people that are handicapped, that can't, can't attend meetings, but want to contribute. There are people in this county have been here a long time. And I know I was at the last redistricting committee, and several seniors showed up to express their views. So this would help them, especially with COVID right now, be able to participate. So it's a good idea. I'm glad you had it.
We will, we will work on it. Have you all, I don't assume to know the answer to this question, although I probably should. Have you all talked about future meetings? And like when our, when the next one might be? Or have we not discussed it yet?
Sorry, Bob just gets a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I get a lot of feedback. I'm going to chime in on that. I have said to all the committee, I have said from the get-go, from the very inception of this, that we would do better to wait until we get some proposed maps from the experts, so that we have a fairly solid base to, to talk about whether or not we want to change something or, or move forward. I don't think any of us on this committee have the expertise that council does to talk about all the census blocks, talk about the, the rules that apply in moving these census blocks around. And so it, it was my observation that we would be better off just to hold off for eight days or ten days, or whatever it is, until Mr. Bass gets back to us with some maps, maybe a couple of choices, as he indicated, that we could then take a look at as kind of a foundation, and then move forward from there.
And I'd like to add to that. Mark, quick question. It was said at the Tuesday meeting that we have GIS resources available to us through the county?
Yes. So the way the charter reads on that is that, and, and part of this is for the mental health of our GIS and mapping person, Steve Floyd, who couldn't attend tonight. But the, the last census round, or the last redistricting round that we did, you know, ten years ago, I think Steve almost quit in the middle of it, because he was under high stress with multiple parties coming to him and proposing maps and getting him to provide feedback. And so with that in mind, and with some balance in mind, the court wanted Steve to be engaged by the party chairs as co-chairs of this commission together, and not individually. And, and so, you know, that way, and of course, that will require Mark and Bob to continue talking to each other and smiling as much as possible. But-
That'd be a problem. Then what I would like to then suggest, Mark, is what would be ideal? I've worked on census redistricting before, and I wrote the software for the twenty-third, excuse me, two thousand census, for the Census Bureau itself. So I understand how the data is formatted. I already have a copy of the data. I've been looking at it myself. What would be ideal for us to have, and I bet you GIS probably already has it, the GIS department already has it, we would love to have a layered map of the voting precincts. If we can get a layered map of the voting precincts accessible to us. There is already a layered map for the commissioner districts on the website. If we could get one for the voting precincts, it gives us the ability to go in and click and turn on and off different layers and use that in conjunction with then the GIS data that the Census Bureau will be having, which Mr. Bass will be providing. And we can do a side-by-side comparison, and it'll make it easier for us to start moving this, moving the precincts, looking at districts, and understanding the true impact, both on population and on voting. And I think it's very important, as we do this, that we keep in mind that population has to be representative, and we want representative population. But we also need to make sure that there's a big discrepancy in voting registration levels and stuff. And we want to make sure that we don't suddenly shift a district completely out, as was previously mentioned, where we've got one district that's registering at sixty percent, another one that's registering at eighty-two percent. So, the thing would be, would be good if we can just compare the two data. I'm sorry.
And I, I don't disagree with that, but I was thinking of, one of the things that we talked with Mr. Bass about, and what he has mentioned before, are those communities of interest. And we don't need to wait for maps to ask people about what their issues are in their particular precinct. We can start on that now. And if we wait until maybe middle October, then we'll have all of forty-five minutes to get this done, because then we have to get it to the commissioners before their deadline, and they have to get it out before, you know. All these other things are falling in like dominos. So before we talk, we, we don't necessarily have to talk about maps, but we should be talking about communities of interest, I think, fairly soon. We have to talk, find out who we're going to be speaking to on those, get out the public. Mark Kennedy just said we need to have five days, what, five days of notice before we do that. So that's going to take a lot of time. So it seems like we should at least get a schedule out for the rest of the, our time here. I don't know. Mark, do you know, what is our deadline? When does the Commissioner's Court want the data from us?
I think they're going to let Bob Bass dictate that to them in terms of meeting the ultimate deadlines, the, you know, statutory and constitutional deadlines that they have. And I don't have a specific answer to that, since Bob's not on here, but we can get you one by the next meeting. And, or at least prospective ones, you know. And I think I would like to pick a couple of floating dates where we say, well, we're on the, we're on the near side of the, the actual deadline that we have, and we, we're going to shoot for this instead. And that way, we have a fallback.
Well, I think Shannon is exactly right. The portal can go up in the meantime, and we can go ahead and start collecting the data that we need to be able to analyze and take into consideration. And the sooner we have that, the more we, you know, more we can incorporate it into our meetings and into our discussion. So, you know, I think getting the portal up right away is something that can be done without Mr. Bass, without another meeting. And, and we can start collecting that data and having that prepared, because it's going to take time both to advertise that portal is there, get people to go to the portal, provide the information, and then collect the information and analyze it. So, you know, a good start would be to get that up as soon as we can, so that that process is undergoing.
You bet. Part of why I was asking, actually, about whether y'all had additional meetings and, and when, because it would be handy if we had a week or just a little more than a week to try to put some of this together. So, go ahead, Dr. Trey.
I wanted to just mirror what Mr. Meyer said. I think that we would like those, that layered map, too, with the voting precincts. That would be helpful. So that would, I want to suggest that we figure that out soon, so we can, we can have that as a resource.
I will look into that, firstly, tomorrow.
Was there a, a structure between Bob Parks and Mark Trey Hand? Did y'all come up with some rough meeting times? So are we going to meet next week?
Well, we didn't actually talk about meeting time. We talked about dates, kind of an overall structure. So first, four weeks of getting data on communities of interest, doing any meetings that are necessary around that. And then four weeks to develop maps, kind of an iterative process of, you know, the different, the, the party chairs going and meeting with, with Mr. Floyd to kind of discuss those maps. And then November sixteenth, the presentation of maps to the public, and two weeks of public comment. I mean, this is all dependent on our- I mean, this is all dependent on our, you know, our, our filing deadlines. But hopefully trying to vote on final maps in commissioners' courts sometime around November 30th so that we give a couple of weeks for candidate filings. That is still tricky based on the timing. We just don't know exactly what those dates look like. And so we may need to tighten that up just a little bit to make sure that we're not too late. But that was the initial schedule that we had discussed.
Just from hearing everything that y'all are talking about with regard to planning, it seems like we have enough where we should go ahead and set dates, go ahead and get them. And if we need to adjust them as we get closer, great, but we can already build that time in, build the time in for posting that we need so we don't run afoul of any of that for notice. And that already has something blocked for each of us at this point. And it sounds like we, even before we leave tonight or at the next meeting, really need to decide how we want to structure these meetings. We definitely know we wanted to livestream that I've heard, but are we going to invite anybody to come in? Are we going to give a deadline by which people could post questions that then would be addressed? But some of those pieces, I think we still need to parse out either tonight or in one additional meeting. Do we also know specifically the kinds of data we want to collect from, from the communities of interest? And we probably still need to parse that out, which may need to be sooner than later.
I agree with Michelle. I think you're spot on. We, we really need to get up a calendar and try to get some meetings down because we'll, we'll fill them. There's a lot to talk about here. It's complex and a lot of, a lot of people have moved into the county and we've got a lot of shifting to do. So it's going to take a while to figure all this out.
Are you all, I assume you all are better at, more available for evening meetings and not daytime meetings? Is that correct?
It's, it's, it just depends. So I can be flexible. But if we want it livestreamed, that may be something for us if people do want to watch it live to consider maybe an evening is preferable.
I'm looking at my calendar for a next meeting. And this is a Tuesday. So we have the fifth and the 12th. And then I don't know how you all are Wednesdays, but generally my Thursday evenings are, I'm pretty available as well. I'm not trying to dictate dates, but I'm just throwing some out there. So yeah, fifth, sixth, 12, 13.
Mark, when we talk about live streaming, that, but there'll be recordings that are, since we're going to livestream, that means recordings will be available on that webpage. So anybody who misses them can go back and watch.
Yeah, as, as long as, I, I think we have consensus on that from group here that posting the recordings would be fine. Yeah, I don't, I don't hear any objections. So as soon as we have the portal up, and Anita, are you recording this one? I did not hit, hit the record button, but somebody did.
Yeah, somebody did. I don't know who it was though.
Okay, well, whoever's.
I don't see it recording now.
It is.
It is.
But I, I'm not sure if I can retrieve it. I'm not the one who started recording it. So I'm more of a Zoom guy.
I know, me too.
I like Zoom.
Yeah.
Three.
Yeah.
We could always switch.
If we could switch to Zoom, that would be really good if we ever have to do another one of these meetings.
I can host those. I, I have a Zoom account, so happy to do that. Any objections over Zoom?
No.
No. Zoom would be fine with me.
Good, good. Well, that's what we'll do for the next one then. Hopefully this meeting's not lost. I don't know who's recording it, but I'll try to figure out how to retrieve that when we're finished and post it along with everything else. And I, I would try to have the portal up for live streaming. And worst case, we could record the next one and post it, just like we are trying to do with this one. So I think we can get it up before the next meeting.
So what it seems like, the question is, are we going to be meeting next Tuesday evening?
Tuesdays are typically a little more difficult for me. Wednesdays I do have availability at around 6:30, which is around the same time. So if that could be a consideration, I would appreciate it. If not, I can make the Tuesdays work.
I have surgery next Tuesday, so I won't be there.
Now, let me, let me, let me chime in here if I may, Bob. Is Thursday an acceptable day for everybody? Michelle, can you do Thursdays?
Typically, yes.
I cannot, I cannot do Thursdays. I can't. I can't swing it. I could, I could swing a Wednesday at about six, I could do it at seven instead of at 6:30. But I can't do Thursdays.
All right, well. Michelle, can you do Wednesdays? Did you say or not?
Yes, Wednesdays are typically.
Can you do Wednesdays? Ken Strange, can you do Wednesdays?
I can typically do Wednesdays. However, next Wednesday I'm going to be out of town. I come back into Wimberly on the 7th.
But if it's, if it's Zoom, can you pick it up?
I'll be traveling. I can probably pick it up on my phone if you guys do Zoom, yes.
You know, if I could suggest, and I'm not trying to delay you all, but I believe Bob needed a little more time to put maps together, just sort of jumping off place maps. What if we push the next meeting to the 13th? Is that two?
That would work really well for me.
Yeah, it would work well for me too.
I'm pretty concerned about the tight timeline. I'm just going to put that out there. But I'm, I'm okay with the 13th too.
I guess, I guess one of the questions that would come up is how soon can we get the portal up and we'll be collecting information? Because we can't always meet before Bob and go over some of that information and make sure that we have it on the agenda going forward to consider. And again, also secondarily with the GIS, if we can get the GIS maps with the voting precincts, that'll also help if we can kind of sit and look at that. That would be something we could share. And GIS is far more responsive than what Bob's system is, not, not optimal, especially for a sharing methodology. So the GIS data is coming from, actually Census Bureau has already released a lot of it and it will help hopefully expedite and speed up the presentations.
But I, I tend to agree with what Michelle had said earlier about, we have a lot of details to work out. And we need to figure out how we're going to actually take this, the testimony, people that we invite, how many people we're going to have, how long are we going to allow them to talk? A lot of details like that, so.
Even, you know, what's our communication process? You know, are we steering everybody to this page so that each one of us isn't giving something different, but we have all of that information? And that's the official kind of communication channel for everybody? So nothing gets lost either and somebody in the community doesn't feel like, well, I was ignored by so and so. But really, how are we going to do that?
I'm fine with gearing all the communication through this portal once it's seven.
I've just, guys, I was just looking at my calendar. I've, I've got a real conflict on the 13th. But Mark, how soon do you think you'd get that portal up so we could maybe push back as Mark Treyhand wants us to do and meet on the 6th? And then again, maybe the 20th?
So I think I can have it up in a week. And, and if I can't, then we could simply record the meeting and post it without live streaming it. But I think I can get it. Unfortunately, I'm reliant on others. So I'll just.
Well, Mark Treyhand, do you want to schedule a, a meeting, Zoom meeting on Wednesday, the 6th? And, and possibly another one on the 20th? With a, with the anticipation that if it just wasn't going to come together, we could cancel one or both of them?
Well, I think that regardless of whether or not the portal comes together, we're still going to need to discuss how we're going to handle information and testimony and structuring these meetings and what we're going to do around these interviews. And so I think it would benefit us to go ahead and meet on the 6th, particularly if you can't meet on the 13th. I think that we need to clarify some of those details. And then if we need to skip a week, perhaps we can collect information that week from the community, put that information out, start getting people to the website and then meet back again on the 20th to start looking at that data and perhaps schedule some in-person folks that we want to hear from pertaining to that, that information on the 20th. That would give us a chance to look over the information first. So I think that would work.
I think that's a good.
I would also hope that if we did that on the meeting on the 20th, we could maybe look seriously at some, some dates beyond that, that we could maybe consider as target dates for the four community meetings that we're supposed to have.
I think also the 6th and the 20th works well, assuming Mark is lucky and can outsource and get a portal up in the next week, which is very ambitious. It will give us a chance on the 6th to review it and see if there's anything else we want to add, anything we feel like is being excluded, et cetera, so that we can, you know, basically have an opportunity to take a first look at it before it really goes too far live. And then that will give two weeks to collect the data during which we can review in the meantime. But then on the 20th, we'll have our data. Hopefully we'll have some maps. The portal will have been, will have been up and we can start scheduling meetings and letting people know what's going on. I think it's, it's a good timing between an initiation and then a resumption of activities.
I'm in agreement with that.
Well, I will, I will do my best and, and I think, well, I would feel more comfortable going live with the portal after you all had seen it. But I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll put on, I'll put content on there that I think is already in the public stream or absolutely not controversial whatsoever. And then if you all want to add some more stuff after that, we can always add content, so.
I mean, there's enough basic information about the growth of the county, the shift in populations and various things like that, that's not controversial, it's fact. And it'll help people to understand the process and why it needs to be done. And so that'll be great. You know, it's just that, you know, working with a bunch of web developers like I do, it's ambitious to get it done in a week, but if you can get us something to look at by the 6th, that'd be excellent.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
Yeah, I agree.
Hey, guys.
It's time consuming and that'll be good, even if we have just a rough framework, that'll be great.
Yes, this is Bob again. Let me just chime in here with my co-chair. Mark, is this, this timeframe, this discussion of meeting on the 6th and then again on the 20th, is that, is that compatible with your thinking?
Yeah, that's fine. Can we, can we make it at 7 o'clock? Is that okay, instead of at 6:30?
That's okay with me. Is that all right with everybody else? Okay.
I'll be on, I'll be on an airplane between 5:00 and 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. So I'll, I won't, they'll make it.
We're going to talk a lot longer than that. Ken, you can always go in.
Hey, as soon as I get off the plane, I'll be hooking up this thing. Nope.
He'll be in baggage, he'll be looking for his bags.
Yes. But as soon as we land, I'll start listening in.
All right.
Can I ask a question? The meetings that we're proposing in each precinct, are they going to be in person? Are they going to be livestreamed?
Both. I believe the request was to try to make them hybrid best we can.
The only reason I brought that up is because I was at the Kyle one. I actually was at every meeting last time around in the county. And we, we will probably need and should have some semblance of security because the Kyle meeting was probably 200, 300 people and it got pretty rowdy. So if we're going to be there in person, I've been a president of the school board, so it didn't, doesn't matter to me. I'm used to people yelling at me, but it could get pretty rowdy.
Those hometown Kyle people didn't like losing.
Kyle wasn't even there, Mark. That's how old I am.
Well, you must be thinking of the one before.
Maybe. I don't know. Both of them. So all I know is they almost strung one up and rode, rode posse after him.
We'll have our constables on notice and I'm sure that we'll have either constables or sheriff's deputies there.
It was only the Kyle meeting. The rest of them were very, very mild. The Wimberly meeting, the, all the other meetings were very mild.
I gotta say, I've been to some Wimberly meetings that felt pretty rowdy, so we.
Oh, I've been there too. I've been there too, but not the, not the redistricting one. But anyway, I'm going to have to get off, but I want to thank the staff for staying so late. I appreciate all your efforts and everybody that's serving. I appreciate the opportunity to, to be with you by, what is this? It's not Zoom. And look forward to working with you all. Thank you so much.
Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Are you going to be available for the next meeting or what is your, what is your schedule?
Well, I have surgery on the 5th. I will be on the Zoom call on the 6th, but I will be goofier than what I usually am. Just to let you know, because I'll probably be on a lot of pain medication. But I'll try not to speak much during that meeting. All right, I'll at least listen.
Hey, Ruben, it's good to hear from you again. I hope your surgery goes well.
Thank you so much. God bless you guys. I appreciate everything. Bye-bye.
Bye.
If I can get out of here. I don't know how to get out of.
There's a little phone, little red box phone or phone.
Top right corner. So we just need to.
Okay. Thank you. Guys, you can go on. You don't have to wait for me to just.
Yeah. This is Bob. I, I really think at this point in time, we've covered all the bases that we need to cover for this meeting. And if no one has any particular points that they'd like to bring forward, I suggest we adjourn.
There you go.
Mark, one other thing before we do that, is there any sort of statutory information that we're going to need as a part of this process that you can give us, give to us to ensure that we're, we're, we're abiding by the rules?
You bet. I mean, I think that's one of the resources we can put on the portal that, you know, the, the public, if they have interest, could, could read through it. I, I, I think it takes a rare, a rare bird to do that, but, and want to do that. But I, I find it interesting at least. I know Shannon does as well. The Voting Act, Voting Rights Act of 1965 is the predominant statute to look at, but then you have constitutional rules and, and from both federal and state constitution. And you have some case law as well. This, this idea of one person, one vote is what drives the balancing of the precincts, for instance. And that's really been predominated from the Supreme Court rulings. So you kind of have this hodgepodge of things that, that I think we could try to capture best we can on the site and let people peruse it if they want.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else have anything? All right, well, when we get off of here, I'm going to see if I can retrieve this recording. If anybody else sees a way to do it and you can save it to your computer and email it to me, then.
So it was started by an unknown user. And my guess is it was started by Janice because she's probably the unknown user who's not on the call. So my guess is it will go to her. We will, fingers crossed.
Yeah, she, she pulls this kind of stuff on me all the time where she, she outdoes me and I don't even know it, you know? All right, well, very good. We will, we will talk to you guys soon. Thanks for your time. We really appreciate it.
Good to see you, Michelle.
Good to see you, Shannon. Bye.
Good evening.